All right. Good morning, everybody. Let's go ahead and proceed with our Board of Supervisors meeting. Dr. Joe Shirley is still being, trying to be connected through telephone, so, but we'll go ahead and proceed further. We do have Supervisor Sims Hauser, myself here, so we'll go ahead and proceed. Let's go, begin with our opening prayer, or invocation, and then a pledge of allegiance. Our prayer will be led by, be done by Chief Eager, Pledge, May McKenzie, and so we'll go ahead and proceed. Chief?
My Father in Heaven, we're grateful for this beautiful day. We're grateful to be able to live here in Apache County, and we're grateful for the good people that live here. We pray today, Father, that would bless us that as we do business that will affect Apache County, that we would be guided and directed by Thee to the best outcome for the citizens of this county. We pray that Thou will bless us all, that we may have that outlook, that we may be here for those citizens, and we pray that as we adjourn this meeting, that we can all travel back to our places of work and do so safely. And we pray for these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Ready, standing. Ready? Pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Thank you. I guess we'll go ahead and proceed further. We'll go ahead to our public meeting agenda for the Public Health Service District, held in conjunction with the Board of Supervisors. So we have a couple, a few items here. We'll go ahead and begin with item one. Mr. Saxon?
Good morning Chairman Shepherd and Supervisor Sims Hauser. Item number one is discussion possible approval of intermental government, intergovernmental agreement, amendment number five STD surfaces, ADHS fourteen dash zero seven one five five seven. This is amendment revises price sheet, and this is a contract we've had since fourteen.
Okay. Thank you.
Chairman, we do have Mr. Shirley on the phone at this time.
Good morning, Chair. Mr. Shirley, good morning, sir. Thank you for joining us. We're on-
Good morning.
We're on item one on our first agenda for Public Health, so, or Health Service District, so there's a discussion, possible action for approval for IGA. Thank you. Mr. Paxton, for the presentation, is there a motion?
Move to approve.
There's a motion by Supervisor Sims Hauser. Is there a second? I'll go ahead and second, since I got the presentation. Any further discussions, questions?
I'll go ahead and second the motion.
Okay. Dr. Shirley, I go ahead and second that for, for this motion, so if we're all on, ready to call for the question, I can call for the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay. We've got three in favor and none opposed. Unanimous. Next item, item two.
We request discussion and possible approval of the updated public fiduciary job description with new pay range of fifty-seven.
Okay. All right. Gentlemen, is there a motion, second?
Move to approve.
Motion by Sims Hauser. Is there a second? I'll go ahead and second. Motion. Is there any further discussions, questions, on the fiduciary job description? Here, none, seen none. Call for the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay. Three in favor, none opposed. Next item, I believe, it says Library District, so I don't know if that's out of place, but-
Excuse me.
Go ahead, Mr.-
Yes, Chairman, we're gonna go ahead and table that item for, for the upcoming meeting.
Okay. All righty. Yeah, it's just, okay. So, is there a motion? I guess, we just proceed, or you want a motion for that?
I'll, I'll refer to the county attorney. I don't know that we do.
Yes, to table, it would be appropriate.
Table to approve.
Okay. Guess we'll table the item. Is there a motion?
Move to table.
Is there a motion, second?
Second.
Second. We've got a second by Dr. Shirley. Any further discussions? If not, call for the question. All in favor will tabling until next meeting. All say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay. We've got three in favor and none opposed. Okay, with that concludes our agenda items for our Public Health Service District. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Sims Hauser motions.
Second.
Supervisor Shirley, all in favor of adjournment, say aye.
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 Thank you. Unanimous. Okay, thank you, Mr. Saxon. Okay, with that, let's go down to our County Library District. We've got a couple items on here. Sue?
Good morning Chairman, good morning Supervisors.
Good morning.
Item one, discussion and possible approval to close district libraries on the Friday and Saturday after Thanksgiving due to low demand for library services on the holiday weekend of 2018 and all following years.
Okay. Gentlemen?
Move to approve.
Motion to approve, second. I'll go ahead and second that. With that, is there further, any further discussions, questions? Not, call for the question for approval. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay. It's unanimous, three in favor. Next item, item two.
Okay, discussion and possible approval to accept three choose-your-own STEM venture mini-grants in the amount of approximately two thousand five hundred per grant for an approximate total of seven thousand five hundred. This is a one-time grant with no matching funds and is supported by the Arizona State Library Archives and Public Records, a division of the Secretary of State with federal funds from the Institute of Museum and Library Services. We were required to put that as part of it, so that's why it, it got long. Round Valley, Sanders, and St. John's Public Libraries have been awarded these grants.
Okay. Gentlemen?
Motion to approve.
It's a motion.
So move.
Second by Dr. Shirley. Any further discussions, comments, questions? Not? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
It's unanimous, three in favor and none opposed. I guess that's the conclusion of our agenda there. Motion to adjourn the Library District.
Thank you.
Is there a motion?
So move.
Motion to adjourn Library District.
Second.
Second by Supervisor Shirley. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, with that, unanimous. We go on, proceed on to our Flood Control District. One item on our agenda. Mr. Crosby?
Good morning Supervisors.
Good morning, sir.
This item is a request for approval of a special flood hazard permit on behalf of Simon Cree Lodge Bowl Four LLC. They are the developer of a Dollar General to be built in the Sanders area. We have received numerous communications with the developer on this. They have, we have found that they have met every requirement that we have required. They have also, we have also looked into adjacent properties that have done the same thing to ensure that they're in the right area as far as our flood plain elevations go, and everything's to be in order. We'd recommend approval.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Crosby, is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
There's a motion, second?
Second.
There is a second by Supervisor Shirley. Any further discussion, questions, comments? None? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Okay, with that, we are done with that item. Is there a motion to adjourn the Flood Control District?
Move to adjourn.
Is there a motion?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Shirley for adjournment. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, it's unanimous, three in favor and none opposed. Now, let's proceed on to our Board of Supervisors' agenda. Item one, Mr. Crosby?
This is, this first item is a notification of the retirement of Steve Rogers and recognition of his twenty-one-plus years of service. Steve is here today. He graciously came on his day off today. He's on vacation today. Give you a little bit of background about Steve. Steve's been, like I say, he started here in May twenty-eighth, nineteen ninety-seven. Steve has been instrumental in starting our county GIS system, getting it off the ground to what it is today. It's been a significant amount of work, a significant amount of fieldwork. I think Steve can probably with not too many other in his company say that he's been on most roads in Apache County, driving them, collecting data to get them onto a map. He's assisted with all three districts in their mapping needs and their road inventory needs for many years. The base map that he was instrumental in helping build for the assessor's office, the parcel base map, has been a great boon to the county, has got, helped us become more technologically advanced. We've been able to get our, our parcels onto a spatially oriented map rather than paper copies of drawings of maps. He's been instrumental in that process, which has been a key to helping us with our rural addressing system that we're currently working on. He's also been a member of various committees. He served on the Crooked Nail Steering Committee, providing maps and suggestions for routes in that committee. Steve leaves here with a substantial amount of institutional knowledge of Apache County, which we will be greatly missing. We wish Steve the best in all that he does in the second part of his life after the county. We'd like Steve to come up and present him with a, Chairman, present him with a bag and a parting gift, if you will.
Steve? Again, it's always good to have people help in ways to resolve a lot of the issues and a little token of our appreciation from the county as a sitting board supervisors and me as a chairman for this year. I certainly always appreciate people. Certainly, we'll lose institutional knowledge, but at the same time, we always try to, within the leaderships that we have within our own capacities, we always try to leave the today a better place for other people to come in, so I'm hoping the next person that comes in will have easy access to a lot of the records and the data that will continue to improve for the, for the county. So I just wanted to say, thank you for your service, sir, for all that you've put in for the last twenty, twenty-one years, and hope you enjoy the retirement or the next endeavor that you have in the next chapter in your life, sir. Thank you. Do you want to say anything? Okay. Again, thank you. Let's move down to item two, where as boards, we sit as the Board of Equalization to grant the following petitions for review. Mr. Patterson?
Yes Chairman, members of the board. This is, to sit as the Board of Equalization to grant the following petitions of review of notice of change for the following appeals. For Anna Marie Bothwell and Robin Russell, as discussed or as presented there, the assessor's office has ruled in favor of the petition, and we would recommend approval.
Okay. Gentlemen?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Sims Hauser, second. I'll go ahead and second the motion. Is there any further discussions, questions? If not, call for the question for approval. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Mr. Shirley?
Okay. Seems like we've disconnected with Mr. Shirley, but we do have two in favor. None opposed, motion carries. In the meantime, we'll go ahead and try to reconnect with Mr. Shirley. Next item, County Manager?
Yes gentlemen, Chairman, member of the board, we have the consent agenda here as presented, A through F, and we would recommend approval.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
There's a motion. I'll go in second, since Mr. Shirley's still being reconnected. Any further discussions, questions, comments? Okay. Consent item agenda. Okay, do we do have one public comment form? Mr. George Walsh on the consent item agenda, sir?
Good morning, George Walsh. We're in Arizona. On the consent agenda, the only reason I have a concern being is this the first time that we brought a RICO item before the board for approval? You would think there'd be a little bit of discussion from the board, since it's their first time ever dealing with this, as to what the process is, why it is it's coming, instead of just pre-approving it because it's on the consent agenda. I think we should at least ask a few questions and maybe think about trying to see why the money's being spent, who's gonna be using the equipment, where it's going, why, you know. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Okay, with that, there is a motion, a second. Any further discussions? If not, I'll call for the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, Mr. Shirley's back on. Thank you, sir. It's unanimous, three in favor, none opposed. With that, item four. Elections?
Good morning Chairman, members of the board. I'm requesting that this item be removed from the agenda, and the board call a special meeting for a canvas next week.
Chairman, members of the board, there has been, I believe, a lawsuit filed by the Republican Party, which is not allowing us to canvass today. The desire is that we could move forward. Angela, did they give us a date and time that would be best?
Well, we have to keep everything open until five o'clock on the fourteenth, so if there's anything, any ballots that'll come to the election office, they'll be, they'll come on the fifteenth, which would give me the sixteenth and that weekend to complete all the processes and get reports to the board for canvas the following week.
Okay. All right.
So Chairman, that could put us either the nineteenth or twentieth, depending on what, what best suits the board?
With the deadline being the twenty-sixth, the canvas.
Okay. All right. Certainly, I understand there's time needed for that. Do we need a tabling motion, or we just basically refer this to a special Board of Supervisors meeting?
You need a table.
Okay. With that, is there a motion to table?
Move to table.
Second.
Supervisor Sims Hauser and Supervisor Shirley motions in seconds. With that, no further discussion, we'll go ahead and call for the question for tabling. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, it's unanimous.
Thank you.
Just, just keep us apprised of the process, and that way we can schedule the-
Schedule the time with you, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, item five, the Sheriff's Office, deputy, Chief Deputy Sheriff.
Morning. Morning, Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Sims Hauser. The Sheriff's Office requests discussion and possible approval to purchase two Chevy Tahoe SUV K-nine units along with three Dodge Ram twenty-five-hundred trucks to be used in the Drug Task Force. The vehicles will be purchased utilizing the Healer River Indian Community Grant Funds of two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars that the Drug Task Force received. The board approved the reception of that grant at the last board meeting, and we'd recommend approval to purchase these vehicles.
Thank you. Okay, gentlemen?
Move to approve.
Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Shirley. Any further discussions, comments? Not, call for the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Okay, next item, Sheriff's Office again.
Good morning.
Good morning, sir.
Honorable Board members, ladies and gentlemen, good morning. Sheriff's Office, discussion and possible approval to create a K-nine sergeant position and promote Deputy L. Clark into the position, give him the five percent promotional pay increase.
Okay, so item six. Okay, with that, gentlemen?
Motion to approve.
Is there a motion to approve, second?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Shirley. Any further discussions, questions? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 It's unanimous, three in favor, none opposed. Next item, Sheriff's Office again. Sheriff?
These are the grand exceptions. Item number seven is discussion and possible approval to accept a fiscal year two thousand eighteen bulletproof vest grant, number two-zero-one-eight B-U-B-X-one-eight-zero-nine-four-nine-six-four from the Department of Justice in the amount of three thousand five hundred and ninety-five dollars. This helps us to offset the cost of bulletproof vests for our personnel. We'd recommend approval.
Okay. Thank you. Is there a motion?
So move.
Motion by Supervisor Shirley, second?
Second.
Second by Sims Hauser. Any further discussion, questions? Seen none, call for the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
It's three unanimous, three in favor, none opposed. Item eight, Sheriff's Office.
Item number eight is discussion and possible approval to accept a DUI impaired driving enforcement-related materials and supplies grant from the Governor's Office of Highway Safety, grant number two-zero-nine-al-zero-zero-two, in the amount of six thousand two hundred dollars. This grant provides us with some overtime funds to help us combat DUI on the state highways, and also for some additional equipment, which are the blood kits that are necessary. We'd recommend approval.
Thank you. Chief Deputy, is there a motion for approval?
So move.
Motion by Supervisor Shirley, second Sims Hauser. Any further discussions, questions? None? Call for the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
It's unanimous, three in favor and none opposed. Item nine, Sheriff's Office.
Item number nine is discussion and possible approval to accept a selective traffic enforcement program grant from the Governor's Office of Highway Safety, grant number two-zero-nine-pts-zero-zero-one in the amount of ten thousand dollars. This grant is an overtime grant that allows us to do additional patrols on the state highway for seatbelt violations, child seats, all those things, and we would recommend approval.
Okay. Gentlemen?
Move to approve.
Is there a motion by Sims Hauser, second?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Shirley. Any further discussions, questions? Okay, all in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
It's unanimous, three in favor. Item ten, Sheriff's Office.
Item number ten is a presentation of the Storm Ready Award to Apache County Emergency Management by the National Weather Service. We have National Weather Service Representative Tony Merriman here, and he'll take care of that.
Okay.
All right. Good morning, everyone. My name's Tony Merriman. I'm with the National Weather Service and Flagstaff. Americans live in the most severe weather-prone country on earth. Some ninety-eight percent of all presidentially declared disasters are weather-related, leading to around five hundred deaths per year and over fifteen billion dollars in damage. The Storm Ready Program helps arm America's communities with the communication and safety skills needed to save lives and property before, during, and after an event. Storm Ready helps community leaders and emergency managers strengthen local safety programs. Storm Ready communities, counties, tribal governments, universities, colleges, military bases, government sites, commercial enterprises, and other groups are better prepared to save lives from the onslaught of severe weather through advanced planning, education, and awareness. No community is storm-proof, but Storm Ready can help communities save lives. I'd like to congratulate Haley Nicole, Jason Merrill, and Brandon Eager for their commitment to keep the residents of Apache County ready for weather-related hazards we experience here in northern Arizona. Apache County is the seventh county in the state of Arizona that is recognized as Storm Ready. This is an accomplishment that you can all be proud of. Congratulations Haley, Jason, Brandon, and Apache County.
Okay. Good job. Thank you. Again, as the recognition goes, congratulations, and continue to push the envelope and stay apprised and ready. So, again, it's just a presentation. I do appreciate Tony for making a trip out here and coming with, being with us today, so, thank you. Okay, item eleven, we've got Human Resources.
Good morning Chairman and Supervisors. Item eleven is discussion and possible approval to update the Apache County Human Resources Policy Manual, Section seven point six. This is the Educational Assistance Program.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Supervisor Shirley. Any further discussions, questions, comments? If none, call for the question for, all in favor for approval, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
It's unanimous, three in favor, none opposed. Item twelve, Human Resources.
And Chairman, I apologize, we're going to be removing item twelve from the agenda.
Okay. All right. With that, then, going down to item thirteen.
Item thirteen is discussion and possible approval to create a facilities and construction worker three position. This is range thirty-eight for District One.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Is there a motion to approve, second?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Shirley. Any discussions, comments? If none, I'll call for the question for approval. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, it's unanimous, three in favor and none opposed. Item fourteen, County Engineer, Karen?
Supervisors, this is a discussion and possible approval to increase the contract amount of for CMI engineering for an additional sixty-nine thousand dollars. The initial contract was for sixty. We've expended those funds, and we recommend that we extend that contract another sixty-nine thousand.
Okay. Gentlemen? Is there a motion for approval?
Move to approve.
There is a motion for approval, second?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Shirley. Questions, comments? Any further discussions? If not, I'll call for the question for approval. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
It's unanimous, three in favor, none opposed. Item fifteen, Mr. Patterson?
Yes Chairman, members of the board. This is a discussion and possible selection of a member of the Board of Supervisors to serve as on the NACOG Executive Committee. Apache County has two positions on the Executive Committee. Mr. Shirley holds one of those. We do have a vacancy, and it's for that vacancy that we're here for.
Okay. There is a vacancy, gentlemen?
I move to appoint Supervisor Shepherd to that position.
Okay. There is a motion to appoint Supervisor Shepherd for the vacancy to NACOG. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Shirley. Okay, thank you, gentlemen. Be privileged to be a part of this and to continue to move on our items and, as we move forward with NACOG, so I do accept and appreciate the motion, the second. If there are any other further discussions, I'd like to go ahead and call for the question for approval. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, unanimous. With that, you've got item sixteen, County Manager?[1709.66] Okay, unanimous. With that, you got item 16, county manager?
Yes gentlemen, this is a discussion on possible selection of a member to represent the Board of Supervisors to serve on the ECO or Eastern Counties Organization Committee, and we'll leave it to you.
Okay. There is a position open, so with that, is there a motion for appointment? Certainly I-
I move to appoint Supervisor Sims Hauser to the position.
Okay, with that all second, Supervisor Shirley's motion to appoint Supervisor Sims Hauser to be a part of ECO Committee. Mr. Sims Hauser?
Thank you.
Okay. With that, there is a motion, a second. If there are any further discussions, questions, I'll call for the question for approval. All in favor say aye.
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 Okay, it's unanimous, three in favor, none opposed. With that, Superior Court Judge Latham or his office?
Good morning Supervisors.
Good morning, sir.
Judge Latham sends his regrets. He's in a jury trial in Navajo County. We just wanted to give you an update. The Apache County Probation Services was recognized for the Loft Legacy Teen Center at the most recent court leadership conference through the Supreme Court of the state of Arizona for winning a strategic award for improving communications and community participation for the work that we've done here in St. John's with our loft. We also received a letter based upon it from the State Bar of Arizona that said, "On behalf of the State Bar of Arizona and the entire membership, congratulations to the Legacy Teen Center, Apache County Juvenile Probation Department on being the recipient of the 2018 Improving Communications and Community Participation Strategic Agenda Award by the Supreme Court of Arizona. Thank you for the significant contributions you continue to make to our legal community and to the citizens of Arizona."
Thank you. Alright, as Chairman of the Board, I'd say congratulations again, and I think there's awesome staff that are over there. I always say that, you know, it's always better to be proactive with our, you know, kids because as they learn to abide by the law, they have respect for the law and they know, you know, what to expect and the consequences. So, you know, I know it's some, a positive, you know, investment with our youth and going forward. So please let our Superior Court Judge Latham know, we appreciate him and his leadership as well and everybody that's there, the staff that are working there. You guys, they're doing a good job. So with that, those are my comments. I don't know if there's any other comments?
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Okay, that was just information and presentation. Okay, item 18, Mr. Whiting?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Item 18 from the county attorney's office is discussion on possible approval to fill the vacant Attorney One position by hiring Tyron Jensen at a starting salary of $63,897.35, which is slightly below, understand that the agenda item says above. It's actually slightly below. I apologize for the typo wherever that got in there. Anyways, it's slightly below the midpoint. Due to his previous employment experience with our office, he's been both a summer clerk there and is currently a legal clerk. He did pass the bar and we would like to hire him to fill that position at that salary and we would request approval. Thank you.
Okay, gentlemen, what are your wishes? Motion for approval?
No move.
Motion by Supervisor Shirley, second by Sims Hauser. Any further discussions? If not, I'll call for the question for approval. There's a motion for approval. All in favor say aye.
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 Okay, it's unanimous, three in favor, none opposed. With that, we have item 19, Mr. Whiting?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Item 19, following a possible executive session for legal advice pursuant to ARS 38-431.03, discussion on possible action regarding a settlement agreement between Apache County and Debbie Fogel for damage to her vehicle which occurred on a county road. I don't think executive session is necessary, but if the board does, we can certainly do that. The actual suit, claim, and settlement would be for less than $1,000. It's actually quite, quite an insignificant amount in that regard, and we would recommend approval of that settlement with her.
Right. What are your wishes? There is a possible action request?
Move to approve the settlement.
Okay, is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Shirley. Okay, any other further discussions? If not, I'll call for the question for approval. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, it's unanimous, three in favor, none opposed. Okay, next item, I believe, is just for notifications. Mr. Patterson?
That is correct. Chairman, members of the board, this is notifications for the Eastern Arizona County Organization, small counties, the County Supervisor Association, and then memorial services for Deputy, and the most important I should point out, is memorial services for Deputy James Wood at 10:00 AM on November 17, 2018, at the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints in North Frontage Road I-40 in Sanders, and it says Sanders X at Sanders, Arizona. We'd like to make sure that's there.
Thank you. Mr. Patterson, okay, item 21. Art Morikai?
Good morning Supervisors.
Good morning, sir.
I'm here to compliment, not complain. I've complained for a number of years about County Road 5270. Well, in the last six, eight weeks, they've done a tremendous job fixing our road, ditching it, adding limestone, and with help from Mother Nature, it turned out really well. So I wanted to thank Mr. Sims Hauser, Mr. Crosby, Scott, and all the people that were involved in it because I've been a real pain to them for a while. So I feel I have to come here and tell them thank you very much.
Thank you, sir, we appreciate that. And it's good to know that we finally accomplish, you know, that because since I've ever been here, you know, I've met Mr. Morikai from the beginning, so, you know. With that, there aren't any other public comments here? We did Mr. Walsh on the item for the consent agenda, so, okay, with that? Oh, I'm sorry. Alright, Mr. Walsh?
George Walsh, we're in Arizona. I have a few concerns. One is that District 1 is still running a nightclub in a county maintenance facility, and the concerns are without an adopted policy or an adopted set fee for the use of the facility, what are the liabilities to the taxpayers? We also have the District 2 Supervisor who has taken three water trucks over to the Camaro, New Mexico to help put out a fire on a private business. I don't believe we have any intergovernmental agreements with the private businesses in New Mexico, and I'd like to know why it is our tax resources are being used in New Mexico. Then we have the county attorney who is notified by the Auditor General's office that his fees for his diversion program had not been adopted as required by statute. That has me concerned because he led them to believe that he has dealt with the supervisors and that those issues were being resolved and the fees were being adopted legally, but nothing's come before the board that I've seen. Then we had the recent press release by the county manager in which he goes through the recent newspaper stories pointing out all the ways that the credit cards are used, except for some of the things he pointed out to amount to illegal use of credit cards and county resources by admitting that they were loans to the District 1 Supervisor and that he has been partially paying them back. I've seen some of these bank statements and I know that they have not all been paid back. I've seen where there's a credit card receipt from Shirley for one bottle of water. I mean, that seems a little excessive to use a credit card of the taxpayers for one bottle of water. Was that repaid? Were the fees of the salaries of the employees that had to go through the records to straighten that out? Were the bank fees included in those reimbursements? Because that admits to a loan. If somebody's taking money and using a credit card and then paying it back, that's a loan. I would hope that some of this would be investigated. Thank you, sirs.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate the public comment and again, appreciate everybody bringing that to the board. Certainly, Mr. Patterson, if you can, I guess it's on record here as far as moving forward, so I'll leave it into the hands of appropriate people here that were brought forth, so. Any further discussions? If not, there is, we've done, dealt with our public comment section, and so if there aren't any other discussions, I guess we go ahead and call for item 21, or actually for adjournment, so.
Move to adjourn.
Okay, there's a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second by Supervisor Shirley. All in favor of adjournment, say aye.
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 It's unanimous, it is 9:11 AM. We are officially adjourned.